Facebook and YouTube are both live streaming. Commissioners still have plexiglass barriers between them. Staff are socially distanced here. We'll utilize the conference line, and we are also wearing masks here in the room. This week is Public Health Week, and so we wanted to recognize, or we clearly recognize, the role of the Health Department and all public health professionals during this pandemic, but also outside of it, too. And I know Chairman has a few comments ready to share with us this morning.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. As we all know, public health has been in the news the last year or so. And with that, I think it's worth noting that this week is the National Public Health Week. So the County Commission would like to recognize our Cedric County Public Health workers and the Cedric County Health Department. This year's theme is, quote, "Building Bridges to Better Health," unquote. These folks work daily to build bridges to keep our community and our people in Cedric County healthy and safe, most especially this past year as we continue to fight through the COVID pandemic by being on the front lines, providing testing, and getting vaccines in the arms. While this has been a critical time in our community's history, and these professionals have worked tirelessly to address the needs to fight COVID virus, their mission and work of providing healthcare services never ceased during this time. Our public health professionals work to provide access to affordable healthcare, reduce the spread of other infectious diseases and health threats, and educate for a healthier, stronger, and safer community. These dedicated and compassionate healthcare professionals provide an important role to the public health and well-being of our Cedric County community. I want to sincerely thank all of these public health servants for all that you do, and thank you, public health. And I would invite any Commissioner to make any comments of thanks if they would like to. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Well, we're recognizing all of public health today, and what we've been focusing on mainly in the past year is testing, and public health has been deeply involved in that. And I know all the commissioners have been tested several times over there, so we've had a firsthand knowledge of what happens in testing. They've been involved in vaccinations, and I think four out of the five of us have all been vaccinated now. I've been over to the Health Department to both the old library, to the Intrust Bank Arena, and to the drive-thru six or seven times. And I've received numerous emails about how nice that the vaccination runs and what a great job they do and how professional they are. But that's only the tip of the iceberg for what Health Department does for Sedgwick County here. It's been the focus for the last year, but at the same time, our health professionals have been working behind the scenes, taking care of dental for some people that can't do that, especially our youth, healthy babies, worrying about other communicable diseases, other types of vaccinations. So I want to make sure that we thank all of our health professionals, not just those that are in the news each and every day, that are supporting it. They're the ones that are kind of the vanguard right now. But I want to make sure that I thank all the health professionals in our Health Department and all health professionals across Sedgwick County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet. Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to echo the comments of Commissioner Dennis. I think he summarized my exact feelings. But I just want to say thank you personally. I know this has been one of the most challenging times probably in the history of Sedgwick County. These folks have really stepped up, and they've given incredible sacrifice, the number of hours they've worked, and the organization efforts that they've put together. We use the word pivot a lot these days, and they've had to pivot almost, it seems like, every week. And so whether it comes, you know, from data or testing, and now vaccinations, contact tracing, all the different things that they've been doing this last year, in addition to the regular duties. I mean, we have lots and lots of public grants that we administer, and it's one of the largest parts of Sedgwick County. We talk about, you know, where does a dollar go? And you can break that down. Human services is centered primarily on public safety, and those types of services come through that organization. So it's a very, it's a large part of what Cedric County does, and it wouldn't happen without great people. And I know this has been the most challenging year, so I do need to express my sincere heartfelt gratitude to all those people involved this last year especially. We appreciate what you do, and we recognize you and just applaud your professionalism and your great service to Sedgwick County. I want to say thank you. Thank you for all you do, and thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Well, I just really want to thank you. I mean, I don't have a whole lot. I would echo everything that has already been said, but, you know, we really can't get to the best place possible as a community as we could if our community wasn't healthy. And so I know public health has really been under a spotlight right now with COVID, but even before COVID, public health has done so much and will continue to do so much even after. And so hopefully, you know, since the light has been shone on really everything you guys do, we can continue to have that awareness and be able to fund other programs that are really going to help our community be healthy going forward. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you from, as a healthcare person. I mean, it's just, we leaned on you so much over the past year, and I really appreciate everything that you guys have done. So thank you so much.
Okay. And Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Over the past year, the stories that I've heard from nurses and healthcare workers has been heartbreaking, the amount of death that they've seen. And so I found a poem that was written by Leanna O'Sullivan. It's called "Leaving Early," and the poet writes to her ill husband, entrusting him to the care of a nurse named Fiona La. My love, tonight Fiona La is your nurse. You'll hear her voice sing song around the ward, lifting a wing at the shore of your darkness. I heard that in another life. She too journeyed through a storm, a kind of curse, with the ocean rising darkly around her, fierce with cold and no resting place, only the frozen rocks that tore her feet, the light on her shoulders. And no cure there but to wait it out. If while I'm gone your fever comes down, if the small, salt-laden shapes of her song appear to you as a first glimmer of earthlight, follow the sweet, hopeful voice of that landing. She will keep you safe beneath her wing. I'm very grateful for the people who have put their lives and their families' lives on the line to take care of us all. I know that this has been a really trying year, and so to say thank you, I don't believe is enough. But hopefully, we can all feel hope that we are in the next phase of this, and we are forever grateful for all of the staff who work in our medical system, from the folks who clean the trash out of the trash cans to those who make the meals in the cafe. Thank you for all you do.
Okay. Thank you. Adrian, and you're the boss, and we want to thank you personally, and please share all of our comments and thanks with all the people you're associated with. So our sincere appreciation.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Byrne, Cedric County Health Director. It definitely has been quite the last 13 months, and you're right, we are, all of us in public health beyond the Health Department are oftentimes behind the scenes seven days a week, 365 days a year, and much of it is unseen. Well, this year, parts, aspects, important aspects of public health have definitely been front and center, and I want to thank everyone, as Commissioner Cruz said, that's been part of this long journey, because there's many aspects of public health beyond the Health Department. But I especially want to thank the Health Department and all the people that have joined this fight. And as Commissioner Dennis said, you know, so well, I appreciate that there are a lot of people that are not on the front scene, you know, on the front line, that are still carrying out the other aspects of public health, whether it be healthy babies, RIC, or our clinic doing, you know, other vaccinations. So thank you to the Health Department, and we will continue to do what we do and get vaccinated, because there's vaccinations, there's appointments available. So again, thank you for this recognition and acknowledgement, and I appreciate all of your words.
Thank you, Adrian. And your plea to get vaccinated, I would also ask if any of the public is questioning, why, or should I, or why am I delayed, or anything else, I would strongly urge you to call your doctor, call your medical professional, and consult with them and find out if they believe you should be vaccinated or not. I strongly urge. So thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
All right. And along those same lines, make sure to mark your calendars. Next week, next Tuesday, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., we'll have a town hall event at North High talking about COVID-19 vaccine mists. So we're going to be debunking these mists at North High with a number of trusted community voices and trusted members of our community. So Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Cruz, would you like to have any more comments about that event next week before we move on?
I'm grateful for all the partners who have stepped up. We have a couple of trusted sources in the community. Officer Paul Cruz will be there to answer questions. We're looking for, we'll have some medical professionals there. It's a really, it's a place for folks to come and ask any question that they have to ensure that we debunk all of those mists and get everybody feeling good about the safety of the vaccine.
Perfect. Absolutely. So make sure that you're watching Cedric County on social media and all of our partners as well on social media for more information as we come closer to that town hall. On the agenda, we have proclamation declaring Child Abuse Prevention Month, a number of appointments and resignations to various advisory boards. There's an item related to compensation in the Sheriff's Office. We have a grant for the Regional Forensic Science Center. Then we have a public hearing and a consideration of a resolution for special assessments for a certain projects in Sedgwick County. And then we have bid board. So busy meeting, a lot of work to do, but Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you.
Okay. Thank you again, Kate. And at this time, we'll call the meeting of Wednesday, April 7th, of the Cedric County Board of County Commissioners to order. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the mercy and justice for all. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we all received a copy of all of the emails that were sent to us as part of the official public agenda comments. Does anybody have any opinions or any address any of those emails? I don't see any, so they will become part of the public record. I'll make a motion that we accept the email, emails that we received for the public agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And we have two people signed up, correct?
Chairman, we had one individual that wanted to sign up for public discussion, but he, his calendar would not allow him to get a conflict, so he's going to reschedule.
Okay.
Sure we have none under public agenda. We do have a citizen under item K that would like to speak when the time comes.
Okay. We'll hold that item K. So we don't, we do not have any people to address this public agenda. Okay, we'll close the public agenda item and go to the next item, please. Madam Clerk.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Okay. We have, I've asked Commissioner Cruz if she would like to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chairman. Whereas we can build healthier, safer, and thriving communities if we take the same approach to raising families that we do to tending a community garden on a shared piece of land. And whereas children are grown locally, locally grown and have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. And whereas hope and commitment are powerful fertilizers that strengthen and support Kansas' families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds. And whereas we must come together as partners to nurture, heal, and grow together, because prevention happens in partnership. And whereas by growing a better tomorrow for all children, together we can ensure that Kansas' children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. And whereas this year's theme is "Growing a Better Tomorrow for All Children Together." Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, on behalf, I, Lacy Cruz, on behalf of Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of County Commissioners, do hereby recognize April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Sedgwick County, and I call this observation to attention for all of our citizens. I will make a motion that we adopt this proclamation.
I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And I believe somebody's here to receive.
Yes. Vicki Roper of the Prevent Child Abuse, she's the Prevent Child Abuse Director for the Kansas Children's Service League. I didn't wear my same color of blue, but I wore a little baby blue for today.
Thank you. That's great.
Welcome to the meeting.
Well, thank you, and thank you so much for doing this. I wanted to also say that I'm the chair of a 60-member agency, Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention, and representing them here, of which Tom Stoltz was a major leader for us in our early years, from 2008 forward. So it's a privilege to be here. This is obviously the second Child Abuse Prevention Month that has been held during the COVID-19 pandemic, and we thank you for recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We know that the work that we do in our coalition is year-round, but April offers us an opportunity to sort of shine a light on that work during this time. The pandemic has brought a lot of risk for child abuse and neglect to our children in this community. We know that times of extreme stress and uncertainty are risk factors and add to the possibility that that can happen. The theme, as you all read in your proclamation, is "Growing a Better Tomorrow for All Children Together." The tagline for that is that every day, we help positive childhood experiences take root. So we're really using a community gardening theme this year, which is particularly relevant to the coalition that I'm chairing. We believe, as we said in the proclamation, that children are locally grown and that it takes all of our relationships, our connections, our environments that we're a part of to help every children thrive. We're a cross-sector coalition. In front of you, you should have lapel pins, and you see pinwheels, and that's because the pinwheel is the symbol for Child Abuse Prevention Month, and it signals, signifies those positive childhood experiences. So hopefully, you will see pinwheel gardens all over the city and spotlights of blue across the community, signifying April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we hope that you follow us on social media using the hashtag #GrowingBetterTogether, so, which is particularly relevant for our coalition. So thank you. We very much appreciate this. We weren't able to be here last year, so this is extra important to us.
Right. Well, thank you very much, and thanks for the pinwheel and the reminders every year. And so appreciate all that you do. Please extend our thanks.
Well, we appreciate all that you all do, too. We all have a role to play in this, and you all have taken a major role.
We're all just trying to make the community a better place.
And you are.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, accept the resignation of Lamont Anderson from the District III Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papoon, County Counselor. Item B is the resignation of Mr. Anderson from Commissioner Dennis's Citizens Advisory Board. Had the pleasure of being part of that board earlier this week, and Mr. Anderson was the chairman of that board, but he has to resign for, because of some of the time constraints that he has, and we'd ask that you accept his resignation.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, I want to thank Lamont for his service on my Citizens Advisory Board for a number of years. In addition, he served as the chairman up until just Monday night, when he formally resigned. He's going to go to work with Brian Fry on his district advisory board, and they meet the same night, unfortunately, and so he can't do both. And so I've got a hit out on Brian Fry right now, but really, Lamont has been a very valuable member, and I sincerely appreciate everything he's done for our community, and I move that we accept his resignation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that. Been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, accept the resignation of Ignacio Elia from the Cedric County Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoon. I see these next three are all related, aren't they?
Right, Mr. Chairman. We can handle all three of these items. C, D, and E is one item. Item C is, of course, accepting the resignation of Mr. Elia from the Board, Community Corrections Advisory Board. Item D is appointing Richard Vargas to this board, and item E is reappointing Kelly Grant to the board. Both of D and E are at-large appointments by the Board of County Commissioners. The Community Corrections Advisory Board is a 13-member board made up of members of law enforcement and District Attorney's Office, the 18th Judicial District, as well as appointments from City of Wichita, City of Derby, and of course, four at-large appointments by the Board of County Commissioners. The resolutions for Mr. Vargas and Ms. Grant are in proper form, and ask that you approve the resolutions.
Okay. With no objection from the Commission, I'll make a motion that we approve item C, D, and E as presented.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, resolution appointing Adam Bosworth to the Cedric County Fourth District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoon.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is the appointment to Commissioner Cruz's Citizens Advisory Board, the student position, and Ms. Commissioner Cruz is recommending that Adam Bosworth be this appointment for the board. We've prepared a resolution appointing Mr. Bosworth and ask that you approve the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm excited to have Adam on the team now for the Citizens Advisory Board for District Four. He is a student at North High and will make a great addition to our board. So I will make a motion appointing Adam Bosworth to the Citizens Advisory Board for District Four.
I'll second that. Any other questions, comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, resolution reappointing Rita Sevart to the Cedric County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Okay. Mr. Papoon.
Mr. Chairman, the Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities is a board that makes recommendations to an et gram and an aging organization. It's a board of 15 members. Each Commissioner gets three appointments. One of each of the Commissioner's appointments has to be someone over the age of 55, and the board meets these requirements, and we'd ask that you reappoint Ms. Sevart to the Council, Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Rita has served now for me for the last four years, has done a tremendous job. I sincerely appreciate her service to our community, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve her appointment.
Okay. I'll second that. Been a motion and a second. Don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, resolution renominating Tim Bonnell to the Wichita Airport Advisory Board.
Okay. Mr. Papoon, you're up again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, these aren't appointments. We actually nominate members to the City Council for appointments on the Wichita Airport Advisory Board. There's, it's a 12-member board, seven appointments by the City of Wichita, five appointments by Board of County Commissioners. This is, again, Mr. Dennis's, Commissioner Dennis's appointment to this board, and he's recommending renominating Tim Bonnell to the board.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim has been my appointee now since I've been on the County Commission. He's done a tremendous job. He's an avid aviator, and I would like to renominate Tim Bonnell for the Airport Advisory Board.
Okay. I'll second that. Don't see other comments. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Commissioner Dennis, is there any other appointments you have today?
I'm sorry, I was just.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business. Item I, detention deputy and corporal compensation.
Sheriff Easter, welcome to the commission meeting.
Jeff Easter with the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. First, I'd like to start off with, a couple weeks ago, Deputy Kinsey was recognized for a national award that he received, and each and one of you were there. Can't tell you how much I appreciate you all being there and showing the support for him and his family. Today, what I'm here to talk to you about is issues that are taking place within the facility. As all of you know, with talking with you, we are 98 positions short out of 233. Some of the things that we have been doing over the last two years to try and increase the amount of employees, the amount of folks that apply to work in the detention facility, we increased, we put together an intense recruiting effort. We utilized Indeed, which is a website. Saw a lot of success early on with that particular website. In two years ago, we were only six positions short. Over that timeframe, we've had a lot go on. One of the things that hurt us most was the unrest of last year. We have a lot of people that maybe wanted to join law enforcement have decided not to. Inside the facility, we do have a lot of turnover. Some of that is caused because a lot of the folks that come in there want to be commissioned deputies or police officers somewhere in this community. So we lose a lot of folks to us when we hire commissioned deputies. We lose a lot of folks to area agencies, which is not a bad thing. They're realizing their goal, and we want to help them get there. However, the flip side of that is, is if we have individuals or, you know, this generation not wanting to be in law enforcement, they're also not going to join the Sheriff's Office and be a detention deputy to further their goals. And so we're seeing that COVID hurt. I'm not going to tell you that it didn't, because it did. We had people that decided they wanted to leave because of the COVID issues and not wanting to bring it home to their family because of the close contact that takes place every day in the jail. We also have a phenomenon that's starting to occur that we see all the time on the commission side, but now we're seeing it on the detention side. As you might have seen in the news media, Kansas Department of Corrections was having issues with keeping people employed, and then they had a lot of issues with some riots that took place, those type of things. A lot of their issues centered around pay. So they raised, and I've given you a copy, or Kate is now giving you a copy of everything, but the area agency comparisons sheet. Kansas Department of Corrections raised their pay at 1826 an hour. This in turn caused Butler County to raise their pay to 1830 an hour plus a $2,000 annual This in turn caused Butler County to raise their pay to 1830 an hour plus a $2,000 annual bonus. Reno County raised their pay to 1606 because they have had correctional facility. And we have stayed with our starting pay at 1596. Some of the proactive things that we're doing right now, we have shortened the detention academy to five weeks. We are the only academy in the state of Kansas. There are no prerequisite-type things, no standards within the state of Kansas on corrections. We think it's very important that our folks are properly trained so they can properly take care of the inmates in there and also hopefully cut down on any liability issues that we might have. This five-week academy will entail on-the-job training during that five weeks. They will only be trained on how to work a indirect pod, which means deputies that are in the bubble. They will not have one-on-one contact with inmates in the direct pods, nor will they be working in booking, any of those type of things. That's why we train for 11 weeks to get them prepared for that. We have 17 people starting Monday. Our hope is, is to put 15 to 16 people in a class every six weeks. And in July, we predict that would be a influx of personnel in there of 50 to 60 people. And so at that point, then we would start with the first class and went through the abbreviated academy and start training them on the rest of the facility so that we can have them working anywhere inside the facility. We're going to take a detention deputy position and convert that over to a retention specialist. Part of the issue that we have is, well, we've been tracking this over the years, and this is not a new issue. This issue's been here for years within the detention facility. But for some reason, we're not able to retain them. And so what I hear a lot from deputies is, it's the pay. It's burnout. It's the amount of overtime they're working because we are short personnel. So we want, wanting to bring in a retention specialist that will be with these newer employees for at least a year, assisting them through the process, answering any questions, and then open that up to the rest of our more senior employees on ways that we can retain them. What we used to see is about the two-and-a-half, three-year mark is when we saw people leaving. Right now, it's at the six-month-to-one-year mark. So they're barely out of training and they're leaving. We have the entire sheriff's office working shifts inside the facility, including myself. I worked in there last night, twice last week. And all the upper command staff is working in there. We've also emptied three pods and placed those inmates in out-of-county housing, which does cost us $35 a day per inmate. However, this frees up three deputies per shift to work in other parts of the detention facility. We also looked at some disqualifiers for detention-only. One disqualifier is, it requires you to have a driver's license. What we're finding is, a lot of the younger generation that live in the inner city, they don't care to drive, so they don't get a driver's license. There's no positions within the detention facility that they drive. And so there's no reason for us to have them have a driver's license. There's been some other things, talking about marijuana use, that used to be an automatic disqualifier for one year. This is across the board for the entire sheriff's office. We now look at it case by case. And, you know, if someone's smoking marijuana, just like if they're using alcohol five, six days a week, then we probably don't want them. If they tried marijuana or drank some alcohol underage, you know, one or two times in the last year, we're going to consider them. When we talk about the raises, you have another handout there that talks about the comparisons. We truly believe that if you grant the raises, it could allow us to compete again with area agencies. When KDOC was having their issues, we were seeing a lot of KDOC employees come to us. Since they raised their pay, they went back. Unfortunately, it's a very kind of transient group of folks that will move to whoever's paying more. And so we've lost some of those folks back. I will tell you that there is no incentive whatsoever when it comes to retirement benefits for capers three. Basically, it's not something we even mention to recruits anymore because if they ask questions on, okay, so what do I have to do to get to retirement, those type of things? Basically, you have to be at social security age and you get 37.5% of your retirement. It's not a good retirement system whatsoever. We are starting to see the same trend on the commission side. I've had three people, actually four people, in the last three weeks, that are all detectives, have announced their retirement. I have seven total that are retiring. Park City and Bel Air, and I don't know how they're doing this, but they're offering, Park City is offering a $10,000 signing bonus at the time that they become employed. They pay for all their insurance and they're bringing them in at about $2 more an hour than I can pay them. Bel Air was able to get passed through their council. They start out pay higher and their ending pay is higher than ours. Therefore, I have seven, seven people that are in the process of leaving the commission side to go work for Park City and Bel Air. And so we're having this issue on the detention side and now we're starting to see it on the commission side. And so right now, we have a class, I believe, of 10 that didn't account for any of this. And we could possibly have another class of 14 in August. And so, you know, you guys were very gracious here a few years back when we put together the step and raise plan. And that was going very well this year. Raises were withheld and folks started looking elsewhere. When we put together that step and raise plan, we were right with our biggest competitor, which is the Wichita Police Department. That was three years ago. Now, they start out pay $4 more an hour again. So those are issues that we're facing. Some solutions that we're looking at, increase in detention pay immediately will hopefully retain the current employees, entice others to apply. Look at the increase in placing cameras inside the facility. You know, that's a one-time cost. We're experiencing right now, or not experiencing, we're, have a pilot project in our dorms, which is our lower classified inmates, of monitoring that area through cameras. An hour, we'll send deputies in there to do rounds, check things, but not have a deputy in there. And so far, in the last three weeks, it's gone very well. We haven't had any fights. We haven't had any major issues. And so there's very, there's about four pods that we could do that in that are dormitory pods, which is a lot of our trustees, kitchen workers, those type of things. And folks that simply just want to do their time and get out. They don't want to have any problems. They don't want any problems from us, those type of things. But the cameras inside the facility, if, if we're putting together, well, we're studying it right now to see how viable would that be. You can never run a facility without personnel. It's not possible. But if there's other things that we can do to free up our personnel, to actually do other very important items that need to be done, because right now, they're, they keep stacking up, which then causes the inmates to get irritable, causes them to get mad. And we're just not able to address some of the technology issues that are taking place in there when we have to make sure that we're checking the inmates to make, make sure that they're okay inside their cells. One thing that I will tell you, and then I've been talking about for about five years, is, you know, we have 70, 70 to 72% of inmates have an addiction issue inside the jail. We have between 30 and 33% that have mental health issues. The criminal justice system is the most expensive system to put people into. When you start looking at the officers on the street, you look at incarcerating them, the DA's office having to prosecute them, judges having to hear the cases, defense attorneys, probation, the prison system. It isn't very expensive. We have, we have got to look at other avenues. And I know all of you are very aware with the Mental Health and Subuse Coalition that Commissioner Cruz is on as well. Those are issues that we're trying to address in hopes of reducing this population. Treatment is a lot cheaper than incarceration. And so we've got to start doing something differently here when it comes to those individuals because this problem, again, I think it will help tremendously to give raises, but I'm not here to tell you that in three years, we're not going to be in the same spot again with personnel because of what other people give raises, because this is an employment area that everybody across the United States suffers from. I go to conferences here in Kansas and it's relative. You know, we have, I talked to a lot of sheriffs that have 60, 70-bed facilities. They have six or seven deputies. If they're short two, it's like being short 98 for them. And so this is not unique to Sedgwick County. It's unique, it's, it is unique to the profession. The, I would appreciate any questions that you may have. I appreciate you taking this into consideration. Like I said, I'm not one to come here very often and ask for a whole lot, but this is, without a doubt, is a big drain on all the sheriff's office. And it's a morale issue at this point because now I'm working, commission deputies who are short on the street, short upstairs, working overtime in those positions, and now having to work overtime in the facility. And the cost factor is much different because they get paid more, so their overtime costs costs us a lot more than a detention deputy working in there. So I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. I know we've all been briefed in one way or another of this urgency. Thanks for spelling out. It sounds like the industry of corrections, as you nicely said, was the, the whole, that whole market is just elevating a cost-per-hour environment.
It is. And then, you know, you throw COVID on top of that. It is, with the court systems being shut down and stuff, we're housing 116 murderers. The folks that we have in there are the folks that need to be locked away. They're, they're no longer, it's, it's not a debtor's prison. It's not, folks sitting there on a $500 bond because of traffic work. These are very serious criminals accused of very serious crimes and they have nothing to lose. So these folks look for ways just to mess with us inside the facility and it's creating a lot of stress and creating people to leave. You know, two weeks ago, two weekends ago, I had two resignations. This week, so far, I have two more.
And so I see that the, your request is for, we don't need additional budget authority, accordingly. That's a nod. And so your request is for an increase of salaries and associated labor taxes at, up to 2.1 million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We've got a question from Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Chairman. I do have a number of questions and thank you for coming over. You saw some of my questions this morning. We'll get to that in just a minute. I do want to, I guess, start out, you know, I know that, I've been here more than six years at this point and I, I'm aware that it seems like every year, we've, we've had, I'm going to say, on average, maybe 50 openings in the detention deputy world. You said you got down to six. How do we do that? What was the change that caused that to happen?
Well, again, we changed our recruiting efforts and we were hitting, the other thing with COVID is, we can't go out to the job fairs. We're having a hard time getting into colleges, those type of things. And so we put together a very good plan to do all those things and we were hitting the high schools because we hire at the age of 18. And so with the schools not being in session, we haven't been able to go to the high schools and recruit seniors. So a lot of that stuff has fallen to the wayside because of COVID. One of the biggest attractors for us is when we use the website Indeed. But now we're starting to see a slowdown and have, since last summer, of people applying through Indeed.
Let me just say it upfront. I understand the, the challenge that you have and I support solutions that will solve this, but I do want to just, I guess I want to share a concern. We talk, we talk about, you know, we can use the money that's already been budgeted for this current year to solve some of this. I assume that the money that you're talking about is, is not money that's been saved already in the 2021 budget, but it's money that's projected to be saved as well.
Yeah. The forecast right now is about 2.1 million in savings. Right now, there's about 2.1 million in there because of the salary savings. Now, I will tell you, if we continue down this path, I'm not in finance, but we spend more money in overtime with commission being in there, I don't see that much savings at that point.
Well, I guess I have, I have some concerns about the idea that this is not going to be a budget impact because even though you might, we might look at this and say the 21 budget isn't going to have an impact, it's going to have an impact in the 22 budget and going on. So this decision we make today has, has a lasting impact on the budget. Thank you for, Lindsay, coming up. I may have questions that you can answer, but if you have a comment, go ahead.
If you don't mind, that would be great. So for the record, Lindsay Purus, so you're CFO. So we do plan each year in our financial forecast that the sheriff's office will spend every penny of their budget authority. And so even though right now it looks like we're on a trajectory to have those savings, we had planned for those to be spent anyway, just because of what we have seen over the last couple of years. Last year, we had additional budget authority. I think the year before, maybe we had to get additional budget authority just because of other issues. So, so there should not be an impact to the forecast because that's already included in the base estimate for 2021 and that carries forward, that's compounded into the future years. So we actually don't expect this to have a forecast impact just on this alone because as the sheriff said, overtime has been so high. It's been something, you know, we, we're sending payroll cycle emails and then monthly emails to the management team basically saying, here's what our personnel looks like. And it, the sheriff has been called out for months now. And so to his point about trying to save on those overtime costs and, and put that back into just straight wages, that, that will be a huge help to the financial forecast.
Since I have you at the podium, I have a question regarding the budget book on this.
Okay.
I'm looking at this, the latest and greatest budget book that we have on county budget and it talks about the 223 FTE positions have a budget that's not including benefits of 800, I'm sorry, $8,876,864. If you divide that out, that comes out to, again, that's, again, I know there's going to be people, you know, above and below.
Sorry, pulling up this.
There's a range of, there's a range of salaries that that represents, but the average salary that that would represent would be, I have it, I have it here in front of me somewhere. I lost my note. Anyway, oh, here it is. Excuse me. One more page back. Well, I had it here in front of me. Anyways, it's around $19 an hour is my, is my point. That would be the average salary for that FTE classification. And we're talking about, you know, a little bit less than six, a little bit less than $16 an hour starting wage. So can you please explain, are there people at 1596 and people at $23 an hour that are in this classification?
Absolutely. So, so the way the budget book works is we take a snapshot in February of all of the positions in the county. Those that are filled, we use their actual wage as the basis. Those that are not are budgeted at the minimum. And so this will have a mix of your most senior deputies who probably are at the very top end of the pay scale, as well as all of the vacant positions that would have been vacant at that time. And we budget for 100% of those positions to be filled 100% of the days of the year.
So one of my questions, so a couple of questions kind of related to that, and this may not be a question that you can answer, but maybe someone else can. What actually is the attrition rate here at the jail right now? And do we have any historical data going back, how the attrition rate has changed? You know, understanding a lot of this is COVID, to your, to your answer earlier, Sheriff, some of this is COVID-related. So I understand the attrition rate's obviously much higher at the moment, but what is, what is it now, right now compared to going back a number of years?
Well, I can tell you, I don't have a percentage. Last year, we hired 110 detention deputies, I'm sorry, we lost 110 detention deputies and hired 67.
Again, going back to my, back to my, years before COVID, I would say that we've, we've had somewhere between probably 40 to 60 openings almost, almost all the time.
Yeah. When I first came here, it was generally 30 to 50 was the highest some years. We got a little bit lower than that. The last three years, it's been running between 60 and 70 and now we're at 98.
One of the handouts that you gave us this morning shows the shortfall. You said 98 this morning, but the other day when you and I spoke, you said, I think you said 96.
Mm-hmm. That wasn't accounting for the two that just resigned.
I happened to, I was today on the detention deputy sheet. It talks about you have 85 is short, but there's also five held positions. If you can't take that into account, there's actually 80 opening, 80, 80 opening positions for detention deputy. So I've got a couple of questions. Number one, why are we, why do we have five held positions here?
In 2011, because of the budget crunch, there was numerous positions here that were frozen, including, I think there was about 12 detention positions. frozen, including, I think there was about 12 detention positions over the years. With this commission and previous commissions, we've been able to unfreeze some of those positions, but there was positions frozen throughout the agency.
Okay. Do we know, do we have any analysis on what the pay was for people who, out of the, out of the 67, I think you said, that left them last year? Do we know what their pay on tenure was when they left?
We know that the majority of them were leaving within six months to a year.
So it's mostly the very new, the newest people?
Yes. We had, let's see, last year, we had two retirements. There's not a whole lot of people that retired from detention, but we did have two retirements. The rest of them left for various reasons.
And you talked about, we have, you know, transfers into a commissioned position. Do you know how many of those went to commissioned positions?
We took 15 last year.
But is that including, like, to WPD and other departments?
No, 15 just for us.
So out of the 65 or so that left, that didn't retire?
There's probably about 25 of those that left to go to other agencies and us.
I'm sorry, what was that number?
Around 25.
25. So I, okay. Do you allow lateral transfers in as well as out?
We have not.
I mean, I'm controlling out, but what about coming in?
Yeah, we have not yet. That's something that we're discussing.
Okay, I think that would be something that we ought to, I would encourage us to, you, I guess, to take a look at that. I think it's a, it's obviously, if other departments are doing that, and we're not doing that, that would, that would add to our pain, I think. I would like to see some creative incentives to encourage folks to stay on. I know one way to solve this is to do a dollars-per-hour wage increase, but since a lot of this is related to COVID, I would, I would kind of prefer for us to incentivize them to stay. And we have a pay study that we talked about yesterday. One of my concerns about doing a wage change is I think it's going to upset a lot of our other county employees. I think we need to solve the problem for the jail, obviously, but I don't want to do something that's going to cause all of our other employees to be upset, because they feel like they're being unfairly treated by this commission. And so I would prefer to see some type of an incentive program that would be targeted towards this problem, knowing that COVID, I think, is waning, and we are getting, we're going to be moving back towards normal. I think the recruitment efforts will be able to be stepped up. And I think that with the pay study in front of us, we're going to treat, all of the employees are going to have an opportunity for some type of pay adjustments going forward based on market study and more scientific, I guess, look at this. And so I would, I would like to see some creative incentivization way to try to encourage people to stick around. I think that might be another way to solve this problem. It might be better for us as commissioners and better for the county going forward.
Well, I will tell you, because of the morale issues that I have on both sides of the House, that I have spoke to a lot of people, their two biggest issues is pay and having to work too much, and has nothing to do with COVID. And so I will tell you, you know, I hear from other county employees as well, and I completely understand the position you're in, okay, that this could upset other folks within the county. But part of the issue is, what I'm hearing from my people as well, is not getting the, the county not getting raises this year, city given raises, Bel Air given raises, Park City given raises, they don't, they're upset about that, plain and simple.
And I agree, and I think all of our employees are upset about that.
They are.
So it's not just, not just detention deputies. With that in mind, we had an interesting presentation yesterday, one of the, we had a, the county did a survey on, on employees and find out what they value most and that type of thing. And of course, it was presented to us that compensation is the biggest issue that causes unhappiness of our current employees. But I noticed, one of the questions is, is if you chose to leave Central County, what would be your main reason for leaving? And they cited compensation, but let me just say, human nature is, we're all going to want to get paid more money. Everyone wants to make more money. And that's a very, very overarching, common opinion amongst, I think, all people. But I think maybe a better question would be to ask those that did leave, why did you leave? Now, they might cite compensation, but maybe there's other reasons that we ought to understand. And I guess, I know there are some attempts to do exit interviews, but with this high attrition rate, as I asked the manager yesterday, I think it would be worth our time and money to invest in a, in a very scientific effort to contact former employees and get them to articulate and clarify the reasons for leaving. Because if there's other reasons besides pay, we certainly want to know what those are. If we don't know what is causing this attrition, then we have, we have very little chance of fixing that problem. Pay, obviously, is going to be one of the issues, no question. But I think that all of our employees are going to feel the same way, and we're going to, January the 1st, I think the 22 budget cycle, we're going to approve pay adjustments, I think, for a lot of employees. And January the 1st, hopefully, we'll get some of this fixed, but it's based on a market study. Now, we'd like to treat all of our employees similarly, rather than singling out a single department that has, you know, this, this challenge, which is more, is a larger challenge than just one department.
I understand that, but also, the challenge I have is, is that environment in there. There's not, a lot of people, other places in the county, where we've had shortages and stuff, we've asked for volunteers from other, other areas to help supplement those type of things. It's not possible in there. And at a certain point, we have to pay them for what they do. And starting out at 1596 is, I think they deserve more. And so I understand what all you're saying, but the fact of the matter is, they have to be paid for their services, and it's a highly skilled area in there, and the environment that they deal with is unlike any environment any of the rest of us deal with.
The numbers you gave us for KDOC being 18, over $18 an hour, is that their starting wage, or is that their average wage?
Starting wage, all that's starting wage.
Very good. And I also noticed on your handout, most of your openings are detention deputy, you have no openings on corporal, no openings on sergeant, no openings on lieutenant, and no openings on captain. So is this going to be a pay adjustment for detention deputies only?
Detention and corporals.
Detention and corporals, okay. Okay, I'll just speak, again, my final comment would be this. I would rather see us incentivize them with some type of a infusion of some help to encourage them to stick on for another year or two, and then I would like to deal with this issue of wage rate, along with all the rest of our employees. I would prefer that, I think it's better for, better for the commission to do it that way. I do certainly want to help you solve the problem, but I think if we simply just do this adjustment out of cycle, it's going to be problematic later on. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thanks for the dialogue, and Sheriff, thanks for all your questions. At this point, I'd like to make a motion that we increase the sheriff's department to 2.1 million annually for salaries and associated labor taxes as presented.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any other, Commissioner Cruz has?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for being here today, Sheriff. I appreciate your presentation. Just a couple of points that I just kind of wanted to reiterate. First, really has nothing to do with you, but if we can use unused fund balance for one department, we have got to consider it for all other departments. That was to Commissioner Howell's point. And again, I think you guys have heard me say this a lot, so I'm going to say that because it is relevant to this discussion. And I want to make sure that anybody who's listening from other departments understands that I am supportive of that and will be working with staff to try to figure out how we can make that work for other departments. Now, two, I just want to point out, all of the work that has been happening with the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition, of which you have been a major part of this. So you mentioned 70 to 72% of all inmates in our jail right now have an addiction issue. We have a real challenge in our community. So right now, we're not able to provide services to those who are uninsured or underinsured, not to all of them. We're hitting only a fraction of those that need that help. You know, research really has found that sending offenders with a history of drug and alcohol abuse to addiction treatment programs, rather than institutionalizing them in jail or prison, is not only the humanitarian choice, but it will cut crime rates, and it will save billions of dollars. So we have to fix this problem before people get into jail, then we won't have the issue we're having right now. So not only does an addiction issue for one person make them go through the court system, but it also, the second, the very next item in our agenda is a $200,000 ask for toxicology, toxicology and drug identification software and equipment. So it really runs the gamut of how much this problem costs our community. So I think that's a really important point, that I don't want to get lost in the fact that we're talking about wages, because really, we have a whole problem downstream that we can solve. Obviously, it's not going to happen overnight, but we have to keep that conversation alive. And I just, I really want to thank you for being one of those champions who does that, because you see it. I mean, you said you worked the jail last night, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, and you worked it last week. I mean, I just, I can't stress that enough, I will quit belaboring the point, but as you can tell, this is a real passion of mine, and I'm, I know that there is something that we can do for this community. This is just one example of why we need to do it. So thank you, Chairman, for the opportunity to speak.
You bet. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. First of all, as far as looking at unused fund balances across the organization, I would not support us taking a look at that at this point in time across the entire organization, because we have to look at the impact on the entire budget and what that does and what other things that are critical. To say that we're going to just blanket move across the entire organization, I don't think is the way that we ought to be doing budgeting with. So with that said, Sheriff, you have a heck of a job. I truly would not want your job. And the last year's been tough being a commissioner, but I guarantee you that you've had a tougher job than we do. Pay is part of the issue, and pay feeds right into morale. And I think those two things, pay and morale going together, are what's impacting you having 85, 90 openings right now. Our job is to support you, it's not to second-guess you and to try and make decisions up here from the bench on how you should run your organization. You're separately elected by the entire county. We're elected by one-fifth of the county, and so I am certainly not going to say that I know how to run your jail, and I won't put myself in that position. So that's one of the reasons that I supported and seconded the motion that was just recently made. One of the things that I watched on TV last night was that we just had the 14th murder in Wichita this year. Last year, we were on a record pace of murders. This year, we're at exactly the same place, on that same record pace. You've got 116 murders in your jail right now. I know you, with the DA and this courts, are trying to work through this to try and work, but we need the whole community to be involved in this, especially the city of Wichita, because when they're faced with a record number of murders, the city of Wichita, two years now, we're running under this, the city of Wichita has some responsibility on what's happening in your jail. And so I hope that they're listening too, to help us with this situation. We can't do it all on our own, we have to have the community work on this. So again, I am here, elected to help you and to support the job that you have, and it's a tough job. So I support moving ahead with the motion as presented. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Let me start off by saying, first of all, Sheriff Easter, I do appreciate you greatly, and I would agree with the comments of Commissioner Dennis, that I know you have one of the toughest jobs in this county. And I know that things are harder now, probably than they've been for a long, maybe, maybe forever, because of the number of violent criminals that you're having to house, and it's entering COVID, this has been incredibly difficult. Converging challenges make this, makes this beyond anything that I would ever, I can't imagine what you're dealing with right now. So I appreciate you and appreciate your staff, and I want to just make sure that, regardless of how I vote today, that you understand I do support your coming to us and asking for help, and I do want to be supportive of some solution. But having said that, I am concerned about the quickness of this. To be clear to anybody who's listening to this meeting today, the first I was briefed on this was Monday at 9:30 a.m. And I didn't know what questions to ask, we didn't receive data, we didn't receive options other than a proposal. And again, I know this is possibly one way to fix this, but I think that, I would like to be more careful with how we go forward. I think if we're going to identify $2 million for these folks, and the first question I might have is, is this motion even necessary, because I think he already has the budget authority? Do we even need to have a motion, the way it was currently worded? I'm not sure that it actually is necessary for him to do what he wants to do. I think he has the budget authority now, and as an elected official, I think he could do this without even having that motion. Maybe I'm wrong. That's a legal question, I suppose.
Commissioner, I'll let Lindsay answer also if I miss it, but the sheriff is asking today to spend projected savings here and now to elevate this pay. He has authority over his budget to some degree, but the commission has authority on pay range and pay structure of this organization. I think that's part of the reason he's here today, asking, because the commission has that authority. Lindsay, anything you want to add to that?
Just the only thing I would add is, really, what you all are authorizing is a change in the sheriff's compensation plan itself. He's reallocating his existing personnel budget, and so you're just authorizing him to go ahead and make that formal change, although it's been noted that he's an independent elected official.
With that comment, though, we did have, if you will, and moved towards step pay a while back, and that was a resolution that came before us, and there was a lot of detail in that, in that package. If we're making adjustments to that now, do we not need that to be defined, so we know what we're, I mean, all we have is a motion right now, we don't actually know what policy this will be in, what policy this will impact and exactly what that language will be?
So this, this does not necessarily affect a policy. It affects, so I think maybe in the past, we've looked at the Excel document that HR puts together that shows the range in grades for positions. And so the sheriff has a separate plan that shows those grades. This doesn't change the max of that grade, it just changes the minimum. That would still have to be a discussion that's had to change that overall plan, and I think that can be done as part of that 2022 discussion.
So for those people that are at minimum pay, this would bump them up. The people who are above minimum pay, what does it do, what does it do for them?
It bumps, so it bumps anyone who's there today by $3.
So bumps the whole scale.
Who's in one of these positions. And then I don't know if there are any corrections that were necessary to anybody above them to avoid compression.
There's about six sergeants that will be affected.
Okay, so the sheriff is saying six sergeants will be affected by that as well, just to make sure that there's no compression.
Okay. Since you're still there, would it be possible for us to do this as a, as a bi-weekly or monthly, or even a yearly bonus? Again, I think that the longer, the longer terms are problematic, because some people are going to come in brand new, some folks are going to be there a different amount, you know, a different amount of time in 2021 and maybe in 2022. So maybe a bi-weekly or monthly bonus would, you know, based on number of hours worked, pay them $3 an hour, bonus pay, if you will, for the time that they work from now until we resolve, if you will, a county-wide wage change.
I think technically, yes, it would be possible, but I think we would, when we had the discussion last year about bonuses, bonuses still impact overtime, and our system doesn't have a way to handle that, so that becomes a manual process. And so what we would have to do then, each pay period, is have our payroll folks go through and calculate the overtime costs for those folks. But, I mean, yes, logistically, it is possible, it is not recommended because of that, I think we'd actually have to bring someone on board.
Thankfully, we're not talking about 3,000 employees, we're talking about 233 if we had every position filled, but right now, it's 100 positions less. So it's 140 positions roughly, you'd have to, not even that, because some of those folks are in higher-level positions. We're talking about, you know, do the math, we're short 80 some positions in the detention deputy plus we'll add the six in for the next level up. And so we're talking 100, maybe 170, 160 employees, if you have to calculate that, on some periodic interval, it would be a month, you know, maybe a one month, maybe it would make this a little bit easier for you, once a month, you'd have to calculate for 160 people, if we did that.
I mean, like I said, technically, we could do it, it does create new work. There are already pretty busy people to try and get that done in two days each week, but if that was the will of the commission, we'll make whatever we need to happen.
I just, I just think that we need to, we need to have an opportunity to understand more deeply what this is going to do to the rest of the county. So I would make a substitute motion, that we would authorize a $3 motion that we would authorize a three-dollar-per-hour bonus to be paid monthly to these, to the detention deputies in the next level up. I forget what you told me it was now. It would be, it'd be the same cost to the county. It would be the same benefit, but it would be paid as a, as a monthly bonus for hours worked. It'd be for the detention deputies and I think the detention corporals.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a second to the substitute motion? I don't see any. So we'll go back to the first motion. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming today. I really appreciate it. I do support your ask. And, you know, when I toured the jail recently, I can't even begin to imagine how hard that job must be. Forget what you're there for, but just the environment as well is just, it's, it's very hard. So I would imagine retaining people, especially given the challenges that we've been talking about, is just extremely challenging. You know, this will, I'm sure, start kicking off other departments wanting the same thing. And I, I, you know, I'm kind of in between Commissioner Dennis and Commissioner Cruz. I think we just talked about how so many of our job descriptions are so undermarket. And I would like, if those departments are asking, I think we should really consider doing what we're about to do for our sheriff's department. But I also just want to thank you for being such a valued voice when it comes to addiction. Addiction touches my family personally, and I, I really see how much cost goes into jail and fines and court and everything else. And at the end of the day, he's, you know, my brother struggles. He's still not getting the same, the help that he actually needs. And so he becomes a repeat. And I'm sure he is one of very, very many. And so I completely, this is something that's personally, personal to me, and I just want to tell you how much I thank you for being an important voice at those tables. So I am in agreeance with this. I think we should do this for you and, and I hope it helps.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hal?
Well, thank you, Chairman. I would rather move forward today, but the speed at which this, the speed at which this has come up and the amount of data that's been provided and the, the lack of options, I, I will, again, still have questions that have not been answered yet. I understand these questions are late, but again, this came up two days ago, so we haven't had a lot of chance to chew on it. With that in mind, I think it'd be, it would be reasonable for us to take a week to think of other ways to solve this, maybe have some data that we would know more, the long-term effects of this, as well as understanding, you know, what assurance do we have this is actually going to fix the problem? I, I guess I would like, as much as I don't want to do this, I want to help solve the problem today. I guess I would like to make a motion. We would delay this for one week.
Is that a substitute motion?
A substitute motion.
There's a substitute motion to delay this week. Sheriff, do you want to comment the urgency of this or?
Well, again, I understand the predicament because pretty much the entire county's undermarket. I understand that.
Right.
The fact of the matter is, is that we are ninety-eight personnel short. We're having a hard time retaining anybody. This doesn't affect anything other than the sheriff's office raising the starting pay.
Right.
I get the, the ancillary aspect of it with the rest of the county. And I, I, that's one of the reasons why I had delayed coming here, because I know the predicament that the other departments are. And, but we're at a point now that detention is underpaid against our biggest competitors by almost three dollars an hour. And if we are going to hopefully slow down the folks that are leaving, infuse personnel in there, we have got to do something about that now.
Right.
Because we're going to start a huge recruiting effort again. And to sit there and say, hey, we paid fifteen ninety-six, and they get online and they see that they can just drive thirty miles away and get paid almost three dollars more an hour, we're going to lose some folks. And we can't afford to do that at this point. And again, this only affects detention deputies and corporals. The reason it affects corporals is because it will compress their pay. Their pay had been compressed for years, and we finally got that fixed three years ago. We cannot go back to those compression issues that we had.
Right. Okay. All right. Well, I don't, I think it's urgent personally. So Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Normally, I would always second a motion to defer something to give somebody an opportunity to move forward. But I'm not going to do it in this case. Because again, as I mentioned earlier, my job is not to second guess the sheriff on how that he's going to manage his jail. Our job is to support the sheriff, to be able to do his mission, accomplish that. And he's done a lot of study and figured out where he's at pay-wise, morale-wise. He knows exactly what the issues are over there. We do not know the issues. And we've all toured the jail, and that's about the limit of our knowledge of, of what happens in that organization. So I'm not going to sit here and say that I know after looking at tremendous amount of data, that I can come up with a solution better than the sheriff who deals with it each and every day. So I apologize to Commissioner Hal, because normally I would always second a motion to defer. But in this case, I think that the sheriff has presented a compelling reason why that we need to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Commissioner, I mentioned one more thing. And, and I know this was just given to you this morning. I know I briefed everybody, but Commissioner Lopez weren't able to meet on this stuff last week. But when we took, look at data, when we did the three-year study before, we used three particular counties that were close, plus the Wichita Police Department. Those counties were El Paso County, which is Colorado Springs, Douglas County, which is Omaha, Nebraska, and Tulsa County, which is Tulsa, Oklahoma. And so we, we used the same groups that were close economic-wise, tax-based-wise, those type of things. Again, we never compare ourselves to Johnson County because that, that is, they're so much higher than us in everything, that there's no reason to compare us with them. But if you see, like in Colorado Springs, their recruit pay starts out at twenty-seven fifty-two. In Douglas County, they start out at twenty-two thirty-three. We're not asking for that kind of pay. We're asking to be competitive with our other folks that are close in proximity to Central County, Kansas. And so I don't know if you've seen those, but that's, that's the data that we, it's, it's not as comprehensive as the last time, but we did use the same type of mechanism to determine those, those numbers.
Okay. Thank you. There was a substitute motion. Is there a second on that? And is there a second? I don't see any, so that substitute motion dies for lack of a second. Commissioner Hal?
Well, thank you, Chairman. Just to, for clarity, if we were to pay these folks a bonus pay, Sheriff, would you be opposed to what I, what I proposed? Or is that something you're opposed to? Or is it something that, I mean?
Talking with my folks, they're interested in the pay raise. And, and them knowing what it is they're going to be paid on a regular basis. And I don't think it's out of the realm with the numbers that I've, I've shown, that they, that their pay gets raised from fifteen ninety-five to eighteen ninety-five an hour. And people are, I'll just be honest with you, people are leery about the bonuses because they could end just like freezing raises. And so they're very leery about those things. Now, I'm, I'm not going to, if that's what the commission decides, A, that's what we'll take. But I don't think that that's, I'm not sure that's the path to go, sir.
Let me make a final comment, and I'm ready to vote. You and I, when we did speak, we did talk about the fact that our benefits probably could be updated. And I think this is true for all county employees. Let me just say, I'm an advocate to move us from a traditional sick leave and, and vacation policy to a personal time off policy. Because the entire, the community around us has changed. They've evolved their benefits packages to that type of a policy. And this is something that says they would get paid regardless whether they are sick or wanted just to have a day off. They would get paid the same. And the money, once it goes in their account, it's all theirs. They don't have to actually be sick to get the, to get the pay. I think that the, the sick leave and vacation policies right now are actually driving some of the problems you're dealing with right now. Because these, especially for the short-term folks, they know if they don't actually take a sick day, they're not going to get paid that, that day off. And so there's, there's almost an incentive for them to be sick. And I, I would like to revisit that. I think our CAPERS III is a disaster. And I've asked for years, we put this on a legislative platform. I think that when I spoke to the, the director of CAPERS, he agreed with me, and CAPERS III doesn't solve any state's problems. In fact, it's administrative burden for the state of Kansas to even have CAPERS III. We can do better. And, and we really ought to move towards a better plan that would incentivize people to, to know that they can invest in their retirement from day one, and the county's going to invest in them as well from day one. And it doesn't require a five years vesting. And there's a few other things we could do with, with benefits. And by the way, the comparisons given today are talking about wage per hour, dollars per hour only. They don't talk about the total compensation package. So again, we're not getting the full picture of exactly how to compare apples and apples. We're, we're not seeing a full, a full comparison here. I'm disappointed this morning that when asked for a one-week delay to get data that hasn't been provided, answer questions that have not been answered, we've only been given one option, I believe it's going to do lots of damage to our organization. I have a lot of reasons why I would like to vote no today. On the other side, I want to show support to our sheriff. And so I am perplexed as to what to do this morning. I want to be known as one that supports you. I'm going to go ahead and vote for this today, but I have grave concerns about how this is going to impact the organization. I, I think we have, we have rushed. You haven't, but the commissioners in two days have gone from a presentation to a two-million-dollar decision. And I'm afraid the effects of this is going to be much larger than the sheriff's office. And we have not been provided the best analysis for us to understand what we're doing. Even the Excel spreadsheet that shows us the, the wage data hasn't been presented to us. And had this been, you talked about the spreadsheet when we did the steps. You talked about the minimum, the, the average and the high. That hasn't been recalculated and given to us as an, as an example of what we probably should understand. So again, the speed at which this is happening, the lack of data, my, my questions have not been answered. We don't have a good comparison apples to apples from between us and other organizations. We don't know what the compensation packages, packages are. We have, we have not done an exit study to find out why people are leaving. I know we have on some individuals, but in terms of doing it scientifically, we've not done that. So I have grave concerns about going forward. I'm going to vote for this today, but I think my comments have been registered. And I guess those of you that feel more comfortable, I guess I'll just hope that we're doing the right thing today. Thank you.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. Motion carries. Good luck, Sheriff, with everything. Appreciate it.
Thank you for all this. I appreciate it.
You bet. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item J, consideration of a grant in the amount of one-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-twenty-one dollars and seventy cents to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, grant sub-recipient agreement for the purchase of two gas chromatograph mass spectrometry analysis systems.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Shelley Stedman, the Director at the Regional Forensic Science Center. And I want to begin by pointing out that while we are asking to spend this money for some equipment, this agreement allows for us to be fully reimbursed. So this should be very positive, and I want to have everybody in the proper frame of mind for what I'm about to tell you. Yes, I'm here to ask you to consider the grant agreement. The Forensic Science Center works very close with the KDHE Office of Vital Statistics. For example, when an autopsy report is completed and the cause and manner of death has been determined, our office completes a death certificate, and that provides the state with the information that they need to track, very important public health data. The KDHE receives funding from the CDC and can provide a portion of that funding to sub-receipients like the Regional Forensic Science Center in an effort to strengthen the data that's available for public health awareness. In 2019, the CDC established overdose data-to-action agreements with sixty-six recipients, one of which is the KDHE. And that project is aimed at tracking evolving trends in the drug overdose epidemic and to integrate that data into prevention mechanisms. The program has several strategies and goals, but our center really fits into what they refer to as Phase Two. And those goals include the improved surveillance of mortality data and more timely availability of overdose death information, as well as implementation of innovative surveillance strategies. Obviously, our office is the key provider of this information because we have the only post-mortem toxicology laboratory in the state of Kansas. And when they contacted me towards the end of the last year and asked what we could use to provide more timely data, I had no idea what funds would be available. So I asked for two computers to the tune of two thousand dollars, ranging up to two very expensive instruments, which cost a couple hundred thousand dollars. And much to my surprise, at the beginning of March, I was contacted and told we were awarded nearly two hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of two gas chromatograph mass spectrometry systems. So this will allow us, if you accept the award, to use one-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-twenty-one dollars and seventy, that need to be removed from service because of age. These instruments are incredibly instrumental in our ability to test for illicit drugs and are still a primary workhorse in the interrogation of biological samples in our toxicology lab. And those are two very different things. You've had a lot of conversations with me lately about toxicology lab. And post-mortem tox involves the testing of samples after someone dies that are collected during an autopsy. So that's vitreous fluid, blood, et cetera. But our criminalistics section, the Drug Identification Laboratory, also conducts testing for drugs. But that's street drugs, drugs that have been seized and submitted by law enforcement. That's more in the form of pills and powders. The important thing here is that street drugs provide significant insight for the trends we will see in post-mortem analysis months down the line. For example, the observation of post-mortem trends involving fentanyl and flu appraisal am overdose deaths followed the detection of those drugs in our drug ID lab several months prior. So shared awareness of the street drug trends within our facility allows for us to expedite development of methods for use in our tox lab and provide better toxicology analysis post-mortem. Our drug ID laboratory also provides important public safety awareness information to regional law enforcement agencies and their public information officers so that that information can get out to our community. And I don't want to take a lot of time, but since I was recently asked for our overdose data for this year, I'm going to talk a little bit about that. Overdose cases are up, but so are the number of corner cases. So because we still have toxicology pending on some of the 2020 cases, I can't tell you the magnitude of that increase or the significance of that increase. But what is clear is a prevailing trend in the types of drugs that we are seeing in accidental overdoses. In 2019, for the accidental overdose cases, fentanyl was on board in twenty-one percent of those decedents. In 2020, fentanyl has been on board in forty-two percent of those decedents. And to put it into further perspective, our data in 2017 showed that fentanyl was on board in four percent of those decedents. Simultaneously, in 2019, our drug ID lab received fifteen cases involving fentanyl. Two of them were powders, but thirteen of them were tablets, blue tablets stamped with M30. Blue tablets stamped with M30 are expected to be pharmaceutically manufactured oxycodone. But those pills were tested and contained fentanyl. Two of our largest cases in 2019 were ninety-nine and one hundred tablets. In two, in 2020, our laboratory received fifty cases that were positive for fentanyl. So three times the number of cases, the vast majority of which were these counterfeit M30 tablets, and some of the larger cases involve over three thousand tablets. So not only are we seeing more cases, but the number of tablets that are available throughout the community has increased quite a bit. We've also looked at the color of these tablets, and the trends have moved towards mixing them with other opioids besides fentanyl, such as tramadol and heroin. And lately, we've seen tablets that not only contain fentanyl, but also are mixed with methamphetamine. So I'm providing you the anecdotal information and the overview of those metrics that I just took a minute to compile. As examples of the type of our, of type of data our laboratory is able to provide to our health, our health partners. And it, it highlights how we can contribute to public safety. Obviously, we need reliable and modern equipment if we're going to continue to be able to provide that information. provide that information. And it is truly the starting point for targeted prevention of drug abuse, and it's especially important that the data information be timely, and many of you know how much of a challenge that has been at our facility lately. So with that, I'll do my best to answer any questions that you may have about the grant or any other trends I may have knowledge about.
Okay. Thanks, Shelley. Congratulations on applying for the grant and then coming back with the good news. So Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I don't actually have any questions. I just want to say thank you for coming over and explaining this to us. I just want to say I'm really proud of you. You're doing a tremendous job at the Forensic Science Center, and you always do a great job explaining the needs and these issues. I want to just commend you for another good job today. I also do want to say I appreciate you as an elected official, as the mayor of the City of Mulvane, which is in my district. I always like to see Dr. Stedman when she comes over because I'm very proud of her for that as well. I would be glad to make the motion at the appropriate time, Chairman, but I'll wait to see if there's any other comments.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for your quick response for those overdose numbers. Seeing it in a graph like you've provided, and I'll send it to my fellow commissioners here, because I think the proof is in the pudding. I mean, seeing all of the accidental overdoses is shocking, really. But the information you always provide is very fast, so I appreciate that. I just think this goes to show that we have a lot of things that we can fix in our community, and we have to put resources towards prevention. So you don't have to come and ask us for $200,000 or any other amount of money, but that's a dream that I live in, and hopefully it will be a reality someday. But I'm happy to support this motion when made.
Okay. I don't see any other comments. Commissioner Howell, you want to make a motion?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I would make a motion we would approve the subrecipient agreement and authorize the following actions. Acceptance of the grant, authorize RFSC Director to sign all necessary documents, including the subrecipient agreement and associated dependencies, authorize establishment of budget authority until the conclusion of the grant term.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meissner?
Aye. Thank you again, Dr. Stedman, and all you and your staff. So appreciate all the work you do. Mr. Papoun, are we okay with going next item?
Yes, yes, sir. I would recommend taking Item K as a public hearing before the executive session.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item K, public hearing in consideration of a resolution regarding proposed special assessments for internal improvement projects in the county.
Mr. Packer?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Lynn Packer, your Deputy Director of Public Works. We are here today to continue your consideration of a special assessment for two improvement projects within Central County. One is Sharice Woods Edition, the other one is Osage Country Edition. We were last here, I believe, on March 10th to discuss, will you guys approve the assessment roll? And we also were able to set the hearing for today, the notice of hearing for today. Garth Herman with Gilmore &amp; Bell is going to come up and provide you with the details of these special assessment projects as we move forward.
Hello, Garth. Good morning.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. As Lynn mentioned, Garth Herman with Gilmore &amp; Bell, the county's bond counsel. As Lynn did mention, the items before you today relate to the special assessment proceedings that began back on March the 10th. They involve two different pieces. One is a public hearing, and then the second piece is a consideration of the assessment resolution. Both of these relate to the Sharice Woods Edition Phase I Street improvements, as well as to the Osage Country Edition Phase I Street improvements. Back on March the 10th, the county commission approved the statement of final costs in the assessment role, authorized the public hearing to be held on this date, also provided for the giving of notice of that public hearing, both in publication in the newspaper, as well as mailing the notices to the affected property owners. All of those actions did occur in accordance with state law, as well as in accordance with the Sedgwick County Charter Resolution Number 61, which originally was the statutory authority for these improvements. To that end, the Sharice Woods project is actually located down south of MacArthur and 119th Street West, and it consists of 16 lots. It was originally authorized pursuant to Resolution 88-2018, which the county commission approved in response to a petition that was submitted by the property owners requesting that the county make the improvements, and then when the costs of the improvements were finalized, to assess those costs back to the district itself. Here is a closer map showing the 16 lots that make up the Sharice Woods Phase I Improvement District. The final costs have been determined, and those notices were sent out. The final costs of the project were $250,694.46. Those were split, or those are to be split equally amongst the 16 lots, which would result in $1,409 per lot per year for 15 years plus interest. With regards to the Osage Country Edition, it is located north of MacArthur and 151st Street West, and it was originally authorized pursuant to Resolution 77-2020, also in response to a petition signed by the property owners requesting that the improvements be made, and then once those improvements were completed, that the costs be assessed to the property. There's a closer view of the 22 lots for the Osage Country Edition Phase I Improvement District. The final costs for that piece of the project were $619,710.50, also to be split equally amongst the 22 lots, resulting in an assessment amount of $2,073 per lot per year for 20 years plus interest. The remaining timing, so obviously today is April the 7th, there will be a public hearing and the consideration of an assessment resolution, assuming that that resolution is adopted by the county. It will be published in the newspaper on April the 14th. Notices of the assessment amounts will also be mailed out on that date to all of the affected property owners. Those property owners will have a period during which they can prepay all their portion of their special assessments. That prepaid period expires on May the 14th. After that date, any of the special assessments that have not been prepaid then will be certified to the county and placed on the tax rolls and collected along with the general property taxes over the period of either 15 years for Sharice Woods or 20 years for Osage Country Edition. So with that being said, as I mentioned, basically, the two items before you are the public hearing, so I would request that you open the public hearing, receive any public comments, and then close the public hearing, and afterwards adopt the resolution levying the assessments for these improvements. With that being said, I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Commissioner Howell, do you want to go to the public hearing first?
I can do it either way. I have a question really for him that he might be able to answer right now. Thank you, Chairman. If one of these property owners wanted to pay off their specials on day one, could they do that?
Like during the prepayment period?
I mean, so explain it. There's a prepayment period. If they wanted to pay it off and try to avoid interest costs, can they do that?
Yes. Especially during that 30-day period, so basically from April the 14th until May the 14th. That is the statutorily required period during which any of these property owners could prepay their specials. To the extent that they prepay that special assessment amount, then it is extinguished, and it's not extended on the tax rolls, and there's no interest cost associated with that.
Now, if they don't pay that off in that timeframe, they say they pay it off a year in the future, then what happens to the interest?
There will still be an interest component at that point, because by that time, the county will have issued general obligation bonds. The special assessments come in to help pay off a portion of the cost of those bonds for these projects. So then, once the bonds are issued, the prepayments, if they come in, then there will have to be some sort of a defeasance escrow that gets set up so that the payments that come in can still be allocated to the, you know, either 15 years of the bonds or the 20 years of the bonds, depending on which one of the projects it is. So there still is a way to do it. It just, frankly, it's not as much of a bang for the property owner's buck at that point because there is going to be interest that has to be repaid.
So let me rephrase what you said in my own words, make sure this is correct. So the projected interest costs for the entire 20-year or 15-year bond, once that bond is, that bond has happened and the construction's been done, their share of the projected interest is still on that property, on that parcel. They have to pay that, their share of the projected interest at that point because there was a bond, there was debt, and that becomes essentially part of their obligation.
Basically, yes, because the bond is out there. And then also, once these are certified to the county clerk, they're going to be certified both the principal amount, so if I go back, Osage Country Edition, down at the bottom of that, that annual assessment per lot, that $2,073, that's per lot per year for the 20 years. That's the principal component of that. On top of that $2,000 per year, there's going to be an interest component that gets added to that. The principal and then that interest piece are what gets certified to the county clerk and put on the tax rolls.
And I assume the folks that signed this petition, they probably provided some type of a guesstimate on what that interest cost would be so they would understand what they're asking for, so to speak.
I would have to defer to Public Works on that.
And I guess I have, I guess, two more questions, and I'd be ready for the public hearing.
Okay.
Do the people that are getting these projects, are they aware of this hearing today? They've been informed that this is an opportunity for them to speak?
Yes. So as I mentioned, the notice of the public hearing was published in the county's official newspaper, as well as the notice of the public hearing itself was mailed to each of the property owners in the improvement districts. Yes.
Very good. And what percentage of parcel property owners are required to move a project like this forward?
At least a majority.
A majority.
But generally speaking, I believe both of these projects had 100%
Okay.
of the property owners signed the petition.
Those are great answers. Thank you for that, and I'm ready for the hearing. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Do we have somebody on the phone? I believe so. I'm sorry, I don't have the name in front of me.
I think it's Kristy, Chairman.
Mr. Kristy, if you can hear us, we're in the public comment section of this, so you can address the commission, and we ask that you keep your comments within five minutes. Welcome.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Good morning. I am now the owner of Osage Country Edition. The first phase has the 22 lots, as he has pointed out, and the second phase has the 32 lots. They are all around one acre in size. My father, Steve Kelly, was the original owner and developer of the edition, and he passed away last August from COVID. I'm trying to keep his business going that he worked his whole life for, and it was a lot to wrap my head around as he had more than just the development to manage. After his death, it fell to me to finish the development. He did the challenging stages to get the planning and plating completed, which took about two years to, from start to finish. I've always worked full-time for him, and I was the only other employee that worked behind the scenes to help him with his business, but it was a lot to take on by myself without his experience and knowledge. He has always done this to his whole life, so this was my first time doing a development on my own, taking it from the planning stage to the physical development of the construction part of it. And the streets were started just a few weeks after my dad's passing, and they were completed in mid-October last fall. The rural water was completed in the end of November. Sedgwick County Electric Co-op had the electric installed just before the end of the year, which was the final step to make these lots buildable, so as of the beginning of the year, these lots were good to start building on. My impression, up until I received the notice of hearing letter to begin living the special assessments, was that normally you have about two years before the assessment begins. When I spoke to Brent Wooton at Bachman last fall, that was the information he gave me. And I understood that this was not a formal agreement in any way, but it was kind of the normal timeframe of this kind of situation. In the notice of hearing letter, it stated that the Osage Country is on the same schedule as Sharice Woods, which has been noted earlier. I spoke to Jeff Lang, the owner and developer of that addition, and he said it was completed June 12th of 2019, which was a full year and a half before Osage Country was completed, which makes it more along the expected timeframe for living the special assessments. I'm asking if there's any way for the special assessments for Osage Country Edition to be postponed or delayed an additional year to be more in line with the timeframe that I had anticipated. This would give me time to sell some of the lots before the specials begin to be charged. Eventually, there will be 54 homes built in this development to provide an increased revenue to the county in the way of property taxes, and this will delay the special, this delay would allow the special assessments to be paid more by the homeowners rather than falling so much on the developer as a whole, because as of now, I'm pretty much owning all the lots. I've sold two, and that was prior to the streets even being in, and so far, I have not sold any more lots. So the bulk of these special assessments now falls to me in this accelerated timeframe that has been outlined by the notice of hearing. So that is my argument on this, and I appreciate you allowing me the time to speak.
Okay. Thank you. I'm pretty familiar with specials and developments in other areas, and she's correct, Kristy's correct. She's the developer, so she owns the majority, the lion's share of the lots until they're sold, which my familiarity is that's typical. Is it legally okay to delay this a year and then bring it back? I don't know. Garth, you had that problem or had that challenge before? I can also defer to Commissioner Dennis, it's in his area.
And Jim Weber is here, too. He can help answer the questions. Mr. Patrick, I knew your father. He's been in my office several times. I've worked with him on Osage Country, trying to get this development moving forward. If we go back in history on where we're at with this, what I worked out with your father was that normally Sedgwick County always bonds any development like this for 15 years. Your father was very concerned about the cost of this project and how much that would be passed on to the homeowner if we continued with the normal process of doing it for 15 years, and he asked if we could do it for 20. As a result of that request, we went to the entire Board of County Commissioners, and we did move it to 20 years at one time. And in addition, we went back to our zoning regulations, and we changed the zoning regulations so that in the future, all the developers would understand that we bond for 15 years. But because your father had gone so far down the line with the project, we felt that we needed to give him a one-time deferral on this and go with the 20 years. So this is something I've been involved in from the beginning with your father. The problem where we're at right now, and Jim Weber can correct me if I'm wrong, but the project is completed. We put all of the improvements in that you, your father requested us to put in. As a result of that, we have to pay for it. Sedgwick County has to pay for that, and that's what we're doing here today, is that we're going to bond that in order for us to be able to pay that. If we give you a deferral from this point, what that means is that we're now going to pick up those interest payments for all of the citizens in Sedgwick County, and that's not fair to the other citizens in Sedgwick County to have to pay the interest on the development that's going into Osage Country. So I sincerely do understand your concern, my deepest condolences for the loss of your father. I appreciated meeting with him, but I don't see how that I can go and ask the other five commissioners to have their districts pay the interest on this for the next year. I don't know that that is something we've ever done before, and I don't think that it would be appropriate at this time. So I truly hope that you understand the position that we're in. And Jim Weber, I don't know if you have anything to add. Thank you.
I just would say, I think you've made an excellent explanation. I would just add, historically, I can't recall a time we've ever purposely delayed a special assessment for a project that was done. We do run off of an annual cycle. This is a weird thing that falls somewhere in the world of public works and the legal people and the finance people. people and the finance people. And so this is really kind of a financial question of how much is the county willing to carry, how long would we be willing to carry over debt on a project like this? It's an annual cycle, and so these things, kind of how they hit is how they go, and sometimes there is a longer gap, because if you come late enough in the year, we don't have time to get you on the tax rolls of that year, and that carries you over another year. So the timing is right for these two projects, they're done, have been done long enough, we know what the numbers are, and we'd like to move them forward. I, not a lawyer, but I think you could choose to direct the county to hold this for a year. I don't advise it, but you could do it. They could finish up the assessment, we could put it on the rolls, but not sell the bond. Wouldn't go on the rolls yet. We could do the assessments, take the prepayments, but again, don't advise it, it would be a bad precedent. I would tell you that the other, I did hear from the Shree's Woods people, and they were also interested in this, they apparently aren't showing up today because they, I would say, followed the explanation, which was we're not going to keep carrying these things. But if you would decide that you would make this allowance on Osage Country, then I would suggest you might have to think about Shree's, because they may not show up, but they've talked to us about extending that one as well. It would just be a constant thing of every developer, you know, it doesn't, this is a very unfortunate thing for the Kelly family. We've worked really hard with them to try to make it all work and keep it all together for them, and it's there and it's ready to go. But that's an experience every developer has, that at some point, you can only go so far with the public investment, and then you've got to pick it up and run with it and make it work. So I'd have to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thanks for your explanation as well. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of echoing some of the comments of Commissioner Dennis, I am curious, and again, I'm not saying I would support this, I'm just, my interpretation of this, and I would, I guess I'd like to hear from the person that's providing testimony, what their intent actually is on this, but my assumption would be, is that they're asking the county to not bill them the special assessment the first year, they would still bear all the costs in the remaining 19 years, is what my assumption would be.
I think the request is that we not bond the project for a year.
Okay.
Which would delay their 20-year
So you know construction.
assessments to later, and then what we're doing is, we're covering financially, we're carrying this money forward without, we don't get, we can't invest it, you know, you can't invest it, make interest out of it, you can't, there's a loss of interest income to the county, for example, because it's not cash that we can go do something with. It's, in the, I think, simplest terms for me.
I certainly see that's one way to do this. I guess I'm, I think what she's, maybe I'm wrong, I think what she's asking for is for the project to move forward and not bill her the special assessment tax until after a year in, which would still leave 20, we leave 19 years to pay off all of the cost plus all of the interest. It would change the numbers. Again, if that's what she's asking, I want to have that clarified. And I think this would be precedent setting, so I want to be very careful with this, but if that's what she's asking, I want to have that clarified. And again, in terms of putting the cost of interest on other taxpayers, of course, I think that's a non-starter, we're not going to be able to do that, but I'm not sure there's even, there may be a legal barrier to do this, maybe the reasons why we can't do what I, what I just described, maybe that's not even possible to do that. But I would just say, and my final question would be, what assurance do we have that these other lots will be sold? And if they are not sold, and she was to default on this by not paying the special assessment taxes when they're due, does the county then have the right to go and do the tax sale and all that type of stuff? It would trigger essentially repayment to the county through...
That's exactly what would happen if they were to not pay their taxes long enough to go into default, and then they would go to tax sale, and then they would...
And these lots are worth quite a bit more than what we're talking about in terms of the, the special assessment taxes
Yes, right.
would be captured no problem by the sale of that lot.
No problem. I don't think we're at any risk there, because all the, I mean, in some places, you don't have all the infrastructure. So infrastructure is all there. She's detailed for you that they've got the streets in, they've got the water in, they've got power in there. There's nothing, no impediment to sale of these lots.
So I guess I just finalize my comment. I do think this is precedent setting. I think the cost, the risk to other taxpayers is zero, but I do think it does put a financial burden on the county for a short time until, until these, I guess, for that first year would be, would be, would be a burden of the county, but again, we would not hold that, it would still be borne by the, by the property owners, you know, in the future. So I'm not sure what to do with this, but I do think that, it's an interesting question, if she wants to talk about her, you know, how sure she is that she'll sell these plots and that type of thing, I would not mind hearing from her on that as well. Thank you.
Christie, do you have anything you want to comment on? Otherwise, we're going to move forward here, I think.
No, not particularly too much. I think where I was coming from was more from the point as, you know, in comparison to the Shree's Woods that had a year and a half, which will now turn into two and a half years before the special assessments are actually due for that timeframe, this has, my special assessments are occurring literally as it was ready to be sellable. And so that, it was just a concern, because it was shocking that mine was moving so fast compared to what in the past, when we've developed other, other places, we did, there was just more time allowed to sell lots. But I do understand where you're coming from. I am receiving a number of calls on interest in the lots. I think in the current climate of everything right now, people are a little wary maybe of buying lots because of lumber prices and so forth, things are just a little up in the air, although new home building is happening pretty rapidly, depending on the material available. But I just, I just wanted to address this and just see if there was any opportunity to delay these to allow more time, but I do understand completely the viewpoint of if you, you know, give me a delay, then I understand where that kind of trickles down to other things.
Okay. Thank you for your, thank you for your comments and for your, your respect and your professionalism as well. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we're really trying to do today is sell some bonds so that we can pay for the projects for these two developments that have gone in. I guess I do have one question. Is it appropriate if we close the public hearing and then adopt the resolution? But I don't know if it's legal. Commissioner Howe brought up an interesting point that I hadn't thought of before. Is there a possibility of starting the payment, putting it, after we pass these, sell these bonds, is it possible to start the payment of those one year later, but increase the amount of payment each year for 19 years? Is that, is that even a possibility? I have no idea.
I, I don't know that I have run into that situation before. I know that, you know, pursuant to, in this case, the developers' request, they've requested, you know, 20-year special assessments, and that's what the county granted, so whether, you know, and that's what, you know, these numbers and the numbers in, you know, the notice and the assessment resolution were based on, were 20 years for the repayments, so whether those can be changed to only reflect 19 years, you know, as an amendment to the resolution, I haven't, I haven't run across that situation before. So I may have to defer to county councilor's office or...
Well, I think we need to sell the bonds now, because the interest is as low as it's ever going to be. Next year, we have no idea where the interest is going to be. So I think it's important we sell the bonds, that we start figuring out how we're going to pay this back, but I just didn't know if, through some kind of administrative function, through our treasurer's office or something, that Osage Nation could pay it back in 19 years, starting a year from now. I don't remember the name of the other, one is not in my district, but they could start paying it now. I just don't know the answer. I'm trying to find some way to answer Commissioner Howe's question.
I think that if that is the direction that the county commission wants to take, I imagine that we could probably find some way to make that work.
I think right now, what we probably ought to do, because I truly believe that we'll never get interest rates as low as they are now, we need to move forward with what we've got. But then I'd like to ask the staff to take a look at what we could do in the future on this, this one development, to see if there's any kind of thing that we can do legally. And I don't know, and I don't want to, I don't want to make sausage from the bench today, because that's just going to get us in trouble. So I think probably ought to have the chairman close the public hearing and go ahead and vote on this, but ask the staff to take a look and see if there's anything we can do to help the developer out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I don't see other comments, so we will officially close the public hearing, and we will bring the item back to the commission bench. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we adopt a resolution regarding the proposed special assessments for the internal improvement projects in District Two and District Three.
I'll second that. Okay, no other comment. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mike, now, do we want to go to...
Yeah, if we could move into executive session at this point, Mr. Chairman, and I think we're going to have to do 50 minutes
Okay.
if we can do that.
All right. Joe, apologies, see you in about an hour, 50 minutes? Okay, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 50 minutes until 11:55 for consultation with an attorney for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss a pending civil action, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to live broadcast from executive session at 11:55.
Second that. That's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay, if we're going to do that here in this room, so if we can clear the room, please, and the video and audio could be turned off, please. And the video and audio could be turned off, please.
I think we are, we are back live, okay. So we returned from executive session, no action taken, and so we will come back from executive session and pick up where we left off. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item L, Report of the Boards of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on April 1st, 2021.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Hi, Joe.
Made it by two minutes before this afternoon.
Good morning.
The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on April 1st, we have six items that we would like to recommend for your approval. The first item is the corrugated steel, aluminized culverts for public works. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from JNJ Drainage Company in an amount of $67,410. Item number two is the CMS 1PC scrub seal oil for public works. The recommendation is to accept the bid from Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions Incorporated, and that's for an initial purchase of $328,900, and then to establish contract pricing at the rates listed for one year with four one-year options to renew. Item number three are two each of the SKID track loaders with brush cat rotary cutters and other attachments for public works. This recommendation is to accept the quote from White Star Machinery and Supply. This is based on the State of Kansas Contract 4407-1, and it's in the amount of $148,453.66. Item number four, Sheriff's Office ammunition, for the sheriff's office. That recommendation is to accept the bids from GT Distributors Incorporated for items one and four, and to accept Precision Delta for items three and five through seven. And this is to establish contract pricing for three years with two one-year options to renew. Item number five is the waste tire transportation services for environmental resources. This recommendation is to accept the low proposal from Champlin Tire Recycling for the rate of $118 per scale ton. And our final item, our item number six, is for virtual career development training courses for resource, human resources, excuse me. And that recommendation is to accept the proposals from Allen Gibbs &amp; Hewlic LLC, and that's for course number seven, for Wichita State University for courses one, three, and nine, Jim Maddox, courses four, six, and eight, and Butler Community College for courses two and five. And then we'll establish contract pricing at the rates listed, and that would be for a period of two years with two one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I do recommend approval of these items.
Okay. Any questions on these six items? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just curiously, item number two, did we actually send that to any competitors for that, for that contract?
Yes, we send out to the, the list that said that they do a variety of oils, but in the past Ergon has been the one that's basically been the single source on that.
I guess I'd just say the report here doesn't show that there was anybody else. Oh, yes, it does. I see it at the bottom. I apologize, my, my error. I appreciate the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't see other questions. I'll make a motion that we approve the items as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You bet. Thanks, Joe. Thanks for your patience and coming back. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Dulles County Manager's Office recommending approval of consent items M through A.D. this afternoon.
Okay. Any questions on the consent items as presented by the county manager? I don't see any. So, Madam Clerk, please, I'll make a motion to approve consent items.
Second.
M through A.D. And there's been a...
Second.
Second. Any other comments being none? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Hello,aki.
Hey, good afternoon, Chairman. Commissioner, Zakeem Ashford, Communications Director. Just a couple of brief updates on our legislative platform this afternoon for you. Kate's handing out a piece of paper, just kind of the standard document that I've been using to kind of give you guys an update each week. We'll start off with House Bill 2281. This one's still in committee. There is some conversation that this bill will not go anywhere moving forward. Just to kind of give you an update, kind of backtrack a little bit, looking at the legislative calendar, Friday is going to be the last day of session, and then they're going to come back for the veto session later on. So we'll update that as, as we move along through the process. Senate Bill 149, so this is a big one. There was a hearing late yesterday afternoon, about three o'clock in the afternoon. There were a number of amendments that came out of that. The committee actually met this morning. I was actually trying to listen to that before I came back in here. It's, it's a rather lengthy process. I'm not sure, I know Justin's here as well, I'm not sure if you listened to it at all, but I will definitely get more updates. So as of yesterday's conversation, these are the updates that we have at this point. And if you guys can remember, this is the reimbursement for businesses that were affected during the pandemic. So basically, looking at this bill, Commissioners, through the hearing yesterday, there's a number of amendments. The minority leader, Senator Holland, introduced, which is now a substitution bill to the original bill, Senate Bill 149. So that's kind of what we're talking about at this point. Under this proposal, businesses could apply to the Kansas Department of Revenue for up to $7,500 in lease and property tax refunds. The state and the county where those businesses are located would then split those payments. The state would be responsible for two-thirds, and the counties would be responsible for one-third. So essentially, if business was granted up to $7,500, I'll just say $7,500, Senator County could be responsible for up to $2,500 of that total payment. That's if they were awarded the $7,500. That's not saying that every business would, but if the max was awarded at $7,500. For-profit businesses with a majority of retail sales, physical locations could apply for a refund. So the minimum that they would, business that they would have to do is $10,000, up to $2.5 million. So those rather large companies who, some say lawmakers say, did really well during the pandemic wouldn't be able to benefit from this. In addition to that, they could not have received more than $350,000 in pandemic-related funding already. So it kind of caps them at that. It also talks about, the amendments also talked about those businesses delinquent in the prior year, property taxes would also not be eligible for this funding. There is a hearing, again, like I talked to you guys about, it's on there, on that note. There was a hearing this morning at 9:30. I got halfway through, there's a little bit more I need to get through, and I'll provide you updates later this afternoon on what happened there. Any questions on that one before I move forward, Commissioners?
Yeah, that's just a continuation of the hearing on SB 149.
Yes, sir.
So it's, we can't really add anything to it unless asked, or just communicate through our lobbyists. Okay, thank you.
Okay. 181, this is the Creating the Elevator Act. This one still sits in the Committee on Federal and State Affairs. There's really no difference than what I reported to you all a couple weeks ago. Senate Bill 264, as you guys remember, this one's also a big one. This one was the Enacting the Addiction Act to Establish a Grant Program for Those Purposes of Preventing, Reducing, Treating, and Mitigating the Effects of Substance Abuse. That particular bill, from my understanding, from Watkins Public Strategies, seems to be dead at this point. However, there is a House bill that was introduced, 2412. This one is being carried by the AG's office. So there's some possibility of movement on this bill moving forward, but this bill currently sits in the Committee on Judiciary. Senate Bill 279, I was asked a couple weeks ago to put this on the report to give you guys an update. This is our Wind Generation Permit and Property Protection Act, imposing certain requirements on the sitting of wind turbines in counties around the state. At this point, the bill will not move any further moving forward, so no update on that one. 286, Senate Bill 286. This bill, we had a lot of conversation, right, over the last couple months about this bill. From my understanding, this bill is on hold until the veto session, which again starts in May. My understanding is that lawmakers are really waiting to see what the federal guidelines for those dollars that come down to state and local governments will be. So whatever those parameters will be, lawmakers are possibly looking to see what those parameters are before they move any further on this particular bill. But I know this is a hot-button issue, and I'll make sure to stay on top of it. 52, as you guys know, we did get that passed. That was a big win for us here in Senator County. This is our nuisance abatement bill.
When, when can our MABCD take any action against some of these really bad places? How long?
I'm not sure.
Commissioner, when I checked yesterday, the bill still hadn't been signed by the governor. Has to be signed by the governor, and then I, I don't remember, maybe, Justin, was it July 1 or...
Paul Pubblica. Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Mike, I believe it's July 1 is how it's drafted. The, the other thing I would, would add is the county's going to have to pass a nuisance abatement code. We don't have one now because a few years ago, we got rid of it in light of that Court of Appeals opinion that said the counties could not abate nuisances. And so we would, before we would be able to actually go through the process, we would need to have a nuisance abatement code back in front of you. I think once that bill becomes, is, we're 100% sure it's becoming law, I think that's something MABCD staff is ready to bring in front of you. I know Chris has already looked into that some.
So if it goes into effect on July 1st, we've got time to have a code developed to...
That's correct.
...to that so that it's effective at the same time.
That's correct. And I would say our, our code that we had before, I think, was pretty well worded, so it's a pretty good starting point, certainly.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Senate Bill 53, this one did pass the House. It's currently below the line, which basically means it's eligible to come before the body for a vote. Now, that was a hot-button issue, this is our charter commission bill, so I'll definitely stay on top of that one and bring you all the updates as those come about. The last one I've got here on the list is Senate Bill 127, which is our suspended driver's license. This bill, not very much movement on this one either. This one just sits in conference, and this is a big one for Commissioner Howell. Again, I'll continue to follow and track that bill as it goes along if it does so. I'll stand for any questions that you may have of me.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you for this. This is a really great update. I appreciate you staying on top of all this stuff. I mean, this is, this is impressive. Thanks.
You're welcome. Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Howell? Yeah, thank you. Looks like Senate Bill 127 was amended on the, in the Senate, on the floor to include some provisions for suspended driver's license, some of the things that have actually Senate Bill 100. But Senate Bill 100 passed the Senate 40 to zero, and it's actually in the House in Transportation, and Senate Bill 127, I believe, is, as you said, it's in conference, but it actually has a provision for suspended driver's license, but it's not as extensive as Senate Bill 100 would be. So I guess I'm not sure we're done with that yet. I don't know. I think we ought to continue to track, track Senate Bill 100, and whatever provisions are in that that are not part of 127, we might want to continue to show support for. Thank you.
You're welcome, Commissioner.
Okay. I came in, don't see other questions. Thank you. Motion to receive and file?
You're welcome, Chairman.
I guess. Do we have to receive and file or just report? We had a motion to receive and file and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Is there, Commissioners have anything to report on the committees they serve on, or I don't see any, any boards? Okay, we'll move to the next item, please.
Other?
Does any Commissioner have any other that they would like to state today?
Yeah.
Commissioner Cruz?
There is, Sunflower Community Action is holding an event at Evergreen on the 8th at 6 o'clock. They're going to be talking about vaccines, really for the Latino and Hispanic community. And so if you're available this Thursday at 6 o'clock, it'll be at Evergreen hosted by Sunflower Community Action.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Any others? I don't see any. Next item is adjournment. Okay. Thank you, the audience and everybody, for your patience today as we work through this a little bit of an extended commission meeting, but we always appreciate and thank you, staff and Commissioners, for your attention, so we will stand adjourned. and Commissioners, for your attention, so we will stand adjourned.